All right, I'd like to resume our board meeting for February 26th. And we are now moving on to the conference agenda items. We will actually be hearing the discussion regarding the options of the sale of general obligation bonds for measures Q and R first, and then we will follow with the restorative justice approaches. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, President Lamone. Start by thanking the voters in the Santa Barbara community for approving measures Q and R for elementary and secondary facilities bond, helping to provide opportunities for our district to continue providing quality facilities for the students in our community. I'm going to provide kind of a brief summary, very brief, and then have Meg introduce our guests. A brief reminder, measure R is our elementary school bond. We had authority for $35 million. We've sold, I'm going to give you round numbers, 14 million. We have completed or are very close to completion in the process about $4.7 million in projects. So we have a cash on hand of about 10 million. Projects that you have seen that you've, that have come to you in the beginning stages total around 16 million, and we have about 20 million in unsold bonds from measure R. Measure Q is our secondary bond. We had authority for the sale of 75 million. We've sold approximately 39 million. We have, we're done or in the process with projects that you've seen and approved around 13 million. We have about 21 million cash on hand. The projects that you've seen that we've begun, you've authorized the kind of beginning stages for, total around 47 million, and the amount unsold of our, of bonds is about 35 million. So kind of the bottom line is that the cash we have on hand in both districts is 31 million. We've, we've had projects that you've seen and/or approved that total 63 million, and we have unsold bonds of 55 million. And we have a recent assessment from our consultant indicating that we have project needs in excess of $200 million. With that, I'd like to introduce Meg, and she can start her presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. I'd like to first introduce, Ms. Bose is a senior advisor at Keegan Advisory headquartered in Los Angeles. She has worked in the municipal bond business for over 25 years and has developed particular expertise in structuring, structuring, marketing, pricing of California municipal bonds. She has worked in a variety of California issuers, including the state of California and the California education clients for the past 15 years. My next guest is David Casanova. Is a managing shareholder of San Francisco Office of Stradling Yoka Carlson &amp; Roth. I think I pronounced that correctly. And a member of the firm's Board of Directors. He has practiced in municipal finance for more than 34 years, and his particular, his particular experience in primary and secondary school district financing, including general obligation bonds. He has served as a bond counselor for more than 470 schools and community college in districts in California. Can you take the podium also?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cash, Mr. Day, and staff. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I am Joanna Bose, and thank you for the very nice introduction, Meg. What are my goals?
I hate to interrupt you. Can you just move the microphone a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
I can pretend I'm a singer.
There you go. Thank you. Is that better? I apologize. Do I have to start over? Okay. Thank you. My goal tonight, one of my goals tonight is to, as Dr. Cash said, is to reacquaint you with, or acquaint you for the first time if you're new to the board, about the district's entire outstanding bond program. And I'm going to start with, you have a copy of the presentation on page three. The presentation is started, is separated into the elementary school district and the high school district, and I did that deliberately to try to keep all the numbers straight. Because there are a lot of numbers, and if you looked at that, I'm sure it can seem to be a little overwhelming. On page three and page four is a summary of all of the measures. So if you look at the top bar, it says measure R, 1995, you have two measure Rs. And those are your first general obligation bonds, and there are none that are currently outstanding from that original issue. Below that, it says the refunding bonds, and those are bonds that were issued to refund the bonds on the top layer. Right? Very simple. And that tells you what your outstanding par amount is on the far right-hand side. On page four, it's exactly the same thing. The top blue line is measure I from 1998, where you issued $25 million in authorization. And again, you can see, you have 10 million, 10 million, 325 million, a thousand are outstanding, and that's going to roll off very soon. So that, that entire measure will be gone very soon. And again, the refunding bonds below that, again, those are refinancing, like you refinance your mortgage, the ones where refinanced at a lower rate to give you, that gives actually taxpayer relief. Then finally, bottom, the bottom purple line, measure R, which is really what we're here to talk about tonight, was sent in 2010, and as Dr. Cash said, $35 million in authorization, and you issued in 2011, you passed the, the measure in 2010 in the fall, roughly $15 million with a final maturity of 2041. Now, I have a breakdown of how those deals were structured as well, and I think probably for measure R, you should know it was a 30-year maturity. It was not 40, it was a 30-year maturity, and it was comprised of convertible capital appreciation bonds and capital appreciation bonds. And if you go to page, if you go to, can you go to page 58? It will show you graphically.
Is that one of the appendices?
It's the appendices, yeah, at the very back. Maybe this is too, yeah, 58, at the very end, you'll see it, page 58. This will, this will give you a graphic illustration. The yellow represents the capital appreciation bonds. Now, so moving on from that on page five, to the back, I'm sorry.
Can I have, can you explain the capital appreciation bonds, how that works? It looks like it accumulates interest for the first 10 years, we pay interest on interest, and then the payments kick in?
You actually, on a capital appreciation bond, you do not pay an interest rate. It is a zero coupon bond, like the treasury issues, and there are TIFs, and there's zero coupon bonds. So in this particular case, your first, your first principal payments will be in two, I'm sorry, it's a little small for me as well, will be in 2000 and...
20.
20, right. And your principal payment was, it would be 30, it's like 39,000, and then 35,000 in interest. That interest is your accreted value. So when you buy, when you issue a capital appreciation bond, and probably more easily understood if you bought one, you buy it at a discount. A bond's face value is $1,000. Capital appreciation bonds come at a discount. They're not $1,000. They can be anywhere from $200 to $900, depending on how long the maturity is. So you're buying a bond at $200, let's say today in 2012, and in 2032, you're going to get your entire $1,000. So that $800 difference is the interest, that's what the IRS calls it, but it is merely an accretion of interest, and then you get your principal payment. But you, but you as a district or the taxpayers are not paying that until that date. And that's the reason why they have been such a crucial part, not only in California finance, but all across the United States, because a lot of times you don't have the ability to pay every year. And hopefully you'll see that a little bit later. Understand?
Okay.
Okay. Page five is just a summary of all of your outstanding debt for all of your measures. It gives you a chronological year, so from 13 to 41, the principal, the interest, and the debt service. That's your total repayment. I also had them calculate, had us calculate the repayment ratio, because you've been reading about repayment ratios, and that's 2.74 to 1. That includes only that small portion of capital appreciation bonds. So it's a very good ratio. On page six, and this is a important introduction to the next page, these are estimated tax rates. It relies, on the top one, for measure R, 1995, which was a two-thirds election, you set as a tax rate goal of $11 per $100,000. And you can see that by the purple lines, you're way under that. The red line represents, that represents the $11. The same is true for measure I in 1998, which is the second chart. You'll see the green bars are the debt service, and there it was a $29 promise. On page seven, and this is an important chart, for 2010 election, the tax rate extension, it was a tax rate extension bond program. That means that whatever the tax rates were in 2010, that was going to be the maximum you were going to try to achieve. So you can see, and this is a graphic illustration, what's very important is you can see in 2013 and 14, that you were already above that tax rate. If you, you understand what I'm saying, that it's, so if we went, so we went, when we went to issue bonds in 2011, there was no room under that red line in those years from 2011, 10, 11, 12, all the way out to really 2021, to issue bonds. So we issued, and then we issued capital appreciation bonds, and a combination of capital appreciation bonds and current interest bonds to 2041. Okay? All right. On page nine, and this goes to the, I think the topic of the evening, is that you have $20 million in authorization left for the elementary school district. So we did a model, and on your little, on the chart on the upper left-hand side, it shows you series A, which we issued in May of 2011, and that's the $15 million. Then we also issue, we modeled this to be a series B in this year, August of 2013, where we, where we would issue $10 million. And then we issue a C in 2016 at 10 million. Now, this is just arbitrary, they can be different dates, but I wanted to show you how, how the numbers work and how, how your tax rates work with your debt service. On the chart, it's, it's, I know it's a little hard to read, but the yellow bars are your outstanding debt service from '95 and '98. Okay? And that, you can see some of that's above the red line. The red line represents the eight, the $13.48 from the 2010 election. Then series A was issued in 2011. Those are the green bars, and you can see that those were all kept underneath the red line, all under 13.48. Now we're proposing, or we've set up a series B to issue this year in 2013. And with the new, with the legislation pending in Sacramento, we modeled this to be current interest bonds, which means they would have an interest rate, no capital appreciation bonds. And what would happen if we issued all current interest bonds? And what you'll see, the blue line, you see the blue line is now, the blue columns are above the red col, the red line. So that means your tax rate, top, top bullet, will go to 1,875, under the assumptions that we are using right now. Your AVs could go up 20% this year, I don't know, but these are just assumptions that we're using. Again, illustration. This is Dr. Cash's favorite chart. I think we got it right. It is. This is personally requested by Dr. Cash, right? And again, on series C, we added, we just did it 2016, and you can see, and we were just trying to fill in under the bars, but that would, new, it's still under 1,875. So the most important thing is to understand that with current interest bonds, you pay less debt service, but to do that, you're going to be above the $13.48 from 2010. Sure.
I don't, Mr. Lamone, that's okay. I, I don't have the appendices, but, and maybe it's in the, one of the appendix, appendices, but the, I guess, what I would like to see in your beautiful chart is, is the trade-off. How much are, would we be saving if you, if you then put a projected scenario, you know, in terms of debt service? Like, so the trade-off is you're paying more now, and then you'll save how many millions of dollars in debt by not using capital appreciation bonds?
Okay, on page 42 of the appendices is the actual debt service that we've modeled. This is not going to answer your question specifically, but if you compare, now my second chart, which, the next page, we modeled this with current interest bonds and with some capital appreciation bonds, both, all right? So if you look at the appendices 42, 42 and 43, and it's full of numbers, and you take the time to look at the totals, you'll see there's about a $3 million difference with using current interest bonds totaled, all in for, for everything that's been done versus using capital appreciation bonds. Specifically, it's about $3 million. Maybe $21 million repayment versus 17. So what you want to look at is this column right here, the 21 million, and then if you go to the 42, you'll see that's 17 million. So the current, it would be about $3 million, just assuming our assumptions right now. Okay? I know, lots of numbers, sorry.
Ms. Bose, could you explain what the rate, how the county raised the rate already this, for this year?
Sure, let me get to that. There's also, there's going to be a, Connor, there's going to be a, yes.
It's on page 20.
Uh, okay. Page 20? No, you don't mean that page. Do you?
Well, what I want to, on page nine, you were talking about that this would increase the tax rate to 1,875.
Right.
But currently, the county has told us that the rate is now 1,738.
That's correct, it is.
Or 1,728. So it's only, it's going up by a dollar forty-something.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, it has. We have, there's an appendices that has all of the, Chris, you know that page off the top of your head, with all the tax rates on it by individual? Let's see, hold on. For the elementary school district, if you go to page 36 on the appendix, okay, page 36, this is your projected tax rates for your estimated, for your elementary school district. Now, there's the 17, oops, the $17 on the far right-hand column, and you see the second line, that's the 1,728, that's what your tax rate was this year that was going to, that will be levied to pay for the debt service. All right? And those are the years that are prior, so from 2007 to 2013. And this is done, we did this by each measure. So you have measure R, 95, measure I, 98, and you have measure R, 2010. So you can see for your first two measures, they're very low, 271, 1116, that each, and that, they did not levy anything, obviously because measure 10, measure R, number two, was not around. So it started in 2011, 12, they added five cents and 10 cents, basically. And so the debt service, the way it works at the county is that they obviously figure out what the debt service is. They have a debt service schedule that, that we have done, or whoever did the original deals gave them. And when they levy, they usually levy the first time for 18 months, not just 12 months. And they build a small reserve. Every county does this. And so they try to use that reserve, and they levy a little bit extra every year to try to balance the tax rate for the taxpayers. But in this case, because the tax rates had been, I think, quite low, and we had debt service that was coming in, they did have to raise it to 1,728, because I don't believe he had the reserve to cover it. I can't, he's not going to tell me that specifically, but I've talked with Mr. Price a number of times. That's his responsibility to do that, because the debt service has to be paid. Now you can see that it goes back down, all the way down. And again, these are just assumptions based upon your assessed valuation, going at a very conservative rate of 2%, then 3%, 4%. I could put an assessed valuation of 8% and you wouldn't have a problem, but it wouldn't be true, all right? Okay? I'm just going to try to see if that's enough of the information that you need to know about the elementary school district. On page 10, as I said, is the, we modeled this with current interest bonds and capital appreciation points, and I think Vice President Parker, you went right to the point where you looked at actual numbers, so there is, there is savings using current interest bonds. Now on page 12, it's the same template for the high school district, only two measures, measure V, which was in 2000, same thing. You just have 17 million outstanding from the '05 issuance, which was, which actually is capable, is eligibility refunded at this point, but that's another, another topic. And then you have the refundings of those issues that are below in the green line. And I show it like this so you can understand where those, when there's a blank where those bonds are, they're down here, just so you understand. There's a refinancing like your mortgage. On page 13, it's measure Q, which again, which we're talking about tonight, the $75 The district was very fortunate to be able to exercise getting a qualified school construction bond. So when the bonds were issued in 2011, 15 million were issued as currents and capital appreciation bonds and convertible bonds. We did 9 million, which were totally current interest bonds, for your qualified school construction bond. That was a special bond, it's a taxable bond that the district receives a subsidy on, so it reduces the taxpayers' levy. And the way it works is that the subsidy, when you do the calculation, that the taxable rate, even though it's taxable, minus the subsidy, gave you a better lower rate than just doing a regular tax-exempt bond. Many, many school districts did them. These also came in the form of a Build America bond, same principle, it's a subsidy bond. They also have a very short maturity, it's prescribed by law, it was 25, it's actually 16 years. It's all set by the treasury. And then last year, because you had more projects to do, we added another 15 million for the high school district. And again, that was a combination of convertible capital appreciation bonds and capital appreciation bonds. Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you, very much. On page 14, again, your aggregate annual debt service for all of these, so you'll see, and this is all in for all measures for the high school district, I'm sorry, the secondary school district, to correct myself. The repayment ratio was missing here, I apologize, it's 2.57 to 1. Again, very low. We look at repayment ratios a little differently than what you've been reading about. We look at them, first of all, in terms of the entire program, which I think is relevant because you're paying for all these projects. And the second is, we look at it in terms of, within an issuance, we include all of the, all of the bonds. The way the retirement, the repayment issues have been calculated for the new super articles is they just take the capital appreciation bond debt service and divide that by the par amount. We look at all the debt service. We don't single that out. I think it's a more objective way to look at it. So this is a sideline. Page 15, again, this is about tax rates, and on page, if you can also put up, well, again, you can see the tax rates for measure V, it was 2931. That's the red line, that, there's a little, a legend at the bottom of the top graph. Oops, I can do this right here. And the same, and this is for measure Q, 2010, here's your 1248. Now this line is your Proposition 30, limit of $30. On your two-thirds elections that you did, the prior measures, there was no, there was no cap. So you, you could do $300 if you wanted. But we just used this as a $30 line, particularly for the Prop 39 election, and this is just to get, to gear it, so it's mathematically correct, as the $30 above, just so you know where it is in relation to your other measures. Again, let's talk about authorize, your authorization that's left for the high school district. You have about 35 million. You can see, here's the summary. Here is the issue, series A, we did in 11. Here is your qualified school construction bond, which is taxable. And here was your series C that we did in June of 2012. This time, we decided to do for 2013, 20 million, and then in 16, 15. Again, it was just to pick two years, it depends on when you need your money, to spend your money, it's, it's all determined by your facilities plan, but we wanted to give you an idea. And again, you can see how the chart works. The outstanding bonds, this is from your two prior measures. And then series A is almost faded away here, but you can see, there's your, the red line is the $12.48. And you can see that its first issuance was all under that line. Then series B was the qualified school construction bond, those are all current interest bonds, very short, right in here. And we did that, you see, that took up debt service that other current interest bonds couldn't. So when we issued these first series of bonds, instead of having these be blue line, instead of these being series A colored lines, it was a way to put it, because we had to have it be short, it could no, it could no, I'm sorry, it could not be any longer than 16 years. And again, we've projected D and E, which are the blue lines. Now this, again, a little bit more dramatic, pushing you up to $19. I think I, I think I ruined your lasers. There is $19 for $100,000 if you wanted to issue all current interest bonds. And that, and those would be your blue lines, and the same thing for series E. So again, it shows you that current interest bonds, overall, you have to pay less debt service, but it's going to put a lot more pressure on your tax rate. And page 18, we just modeled this one, we did a lot of different models for the elementary school district, and I can do that if you're interested, for the high school district. We just did this and then all cabs alone. And again, I can show you the pages in the appendix to show you the difference. Here, your tax rate goes to 1525, and it drops because you're, you're doing bonds on a 25-year basis, and beforehand we were doing it 21. So what happens with capital appreciation bonds to try to manage your tax rate is that you do them longer. Costs you more money, but you, you do it longer, same principles as a credit card or a mortgage. On page 20 is, I think, a very interesting chart. It tells you where everybody else is sort of with their tax rates and where you are. I think that's a, a good indication. I think you're in, you know, certainly well situated in, with all the districts in Santa On page 22 and 23, I just wanted to have this, you have this visual, which is your assessed valuation. These are your actual assessed valuations and your annual change. We like to go back as far as we can now, because you can see what happens, 2006, 7, 8, 9, 10, here's your election, 10, 11. Okay? Now you're coming back, which is great. But this is where your first bonds were issued, and you can see, you can see, I can't see. And 2011, when you were negative, that's when we had to issue bonds, and that's the reason why you had to use capital appreciation bonds. The no-tax increase election concept was based on issuing capital appreciation bonds. That's why so many districts did it. I mean, David can attest to that, because he's worked with many of the districts in California. And assessed valuation for the high school districts on page 23, the same, the same. And we make assumptions, we also like to look at your growth statistics, your lowest rolling average, and also your annualized growth rates. So as you get further out, they go up much more. And lastly, on page 24, I thought I'd just review your bonding capacity, because I think it's important, you just understand the concept. It is a statutory limit on the amount of general obligation bonds that can be issued in a given fiscal year. Is that a good discussion, definition, Mr. Casanova? And what you do is you take your total assessed valuation for the, you multiply it times 1.25, because you're an elementary school district, and you get a gross bonding capacity, and then you subtract whatever's outstanding in par amount, and that leaves a dollar amount of 141 million in this case. So in 2012, 13, right now, your bonding capacity is 141 million for the elementary school district. Same thing, same exercise for the high school district, 36 million, billion, sorry, times 1.25 gives you 450 million bonding capacity. That means if you had no outstanding debt, you could, you could sell 450 million dollars worth of bonds. That's, that's a little bit simplistic, but that's the concept. 93 million outstanding, that leaves you 357. Now, since you've had Thompson unification, you're a unified school district. Because you're unified, the percentage goes up. So 2.5% times 36 million is 901, that's almost a billion dollars of bonding capacity, minus all your outstanding debt of 131 is 770. I'm actually going to have Mr. Casanova talk about bonding capacity, because, because you're a unified school district, and if you were going to issue, or, maybe not, you have to, maybe you just want to have questions, because it's different since you're a unified school district, how you would do your bonding capacity, or how you would structure it if you did an election, or if you wanted to think about it. It's up to you. Or if you just have other...
We'll take questions if we have some.
Okay, great. All right, questions, Board? Ms. Parker.
Come on, there's no such thing as a bad question, you know that.
Well, I'm not so, I'm not sure that it's questions so much as comments. I mean, I feel like we've, we've had the goalposts change and sort of expectations change around from when we ran the bonds in 2010, when it was all about keeping current payment, you know, property tax at the existing level. And, and in our resolution, we put every caveat in there. And, and in our resolution, we put every caveat in there that things could change, and this was an estimate only. And now it's all about making sure that we're not overpaying. And, and, you know, we have it structured in such a way that, you know, we, we don't look at all like some of the one, the districts that have been in the news. When we're talking about, you know, you, you've explained these low ratios, repayment ratios. And the, the, the last I heard, the legislature was looking at capping at, at four point oh. Is that correct? So the ratio would be four point oh. We're, we're already well below that. And so I think that we could be proud of that as a district in terms of, of what we're trying to do long-term for taxpayers. But I'm not sure where the balance is, given what we had, you know, the voter expectation that we had when we set up the bonds in two thousand and ten. And I don't know if we have any room to play with this further to keep, to keep the, you know, to bring it down below eighteen twenty-five even. Because in, in two thousand and ten, it was thirteen ninety-eight. And, you know, we're already five dollars, you know, well, you're moving towards four to five dollars above that. And, and, but I also don't, I don't have a sense of, you know, and I'd love to get feedback from the general public. You know, are, are we thinking long-term in terms of, is it more important that we save on the long-term in the, the overall debt that we pay on the construction that we have? So I, I, I would, I'd love to get community feedback on, on this. You know, to me, as in my own life, I would pay my credit off first, and I would want to pay the least amount in terms of interest. And that just makes the most sense to me. But, you know, we, we have a lot of needs. I just am, am thinking about what we told taxpayers in two thousand and ten, voters in two thousand and ten. So that's, that's what's running through my mind right now.
And I have a question, actually, related to Ms. Parker's comments. So you said that in the elementary district, we would save potentially three million if we went for all CIB. But what was the assumption there for the repayment ratio and the assumption for the maturity by that savings?
Okay, just a second. You want to do page nine, please? It'd be easier. Nine and forty-two. All right.
And I should, I'm sorry, and I should clarify. What was the, in order to, to save three million dollars, there had to be assumptions made about the cabs. I'm sorry. So what were the cab assumptions made in order to save three million by going?
In the second box below, you'll see our assumptions. All right. So for a tax rate of eighteen seventy-five for a hundred thousand, this is for current interest bonds.
So, okay, so the interest rates were three.
Three and a half to five percent. Those are our AV growth assumptions, which is probably the most critical piece when you do this. And we had a maximum term of twenty-one, twenty-four years, but in this case, it's twenty-one years. It's shorter. So it's shorter, higher tax rate. So it's twenty-one years. This case, it's twenty-one years with those assessed valuations and those interest rates.
So my thought in all of this is that the cabs range, I mean, that's part of why they've been in the paper because you can go pretty low, but then there's some that are, where we're, don't ever want to be as far as repayment ratios and maturity. And so when I look at some of the recent cabs, we're definitely on the lower end with repayment ratios and maturity. But I also worry that, and I understand why you looked at our total debt versus just those in the, in the new cabs. But I worry that the more cabs we have, that, that two point seven four repayment ratio that you showed us for total will keep going up. And I actually trust that our district and our board would not go to a repayment ratio that is, I mean, we're very close to what the state might be recommending, the four point, the four, the four, four percent repayment ratio, not the four percent, the four point repayment ratio and the twenty-five. I actually saw something about twenty-five years for maturity.
And eight percent.
Yeah. So I think we're very close to that. But I also worry that if we go the path of all cabs, that our overall repayment ratio is going to, for, for the entire debt for the district is going to keep going up.
That's a fair comment.
And I think that, for me, my hope is to be here in thirty years. My hope is to be part, not just of the voters who voted for these bonds, but to be making these repayments. And like Ms. Parker, I would like the balance. Personally, I'd like to pay debt upfront because I don't know even what the county ratio is going to be like in thirty years. And I don't want to, I mean, I have to think about that. So I'm at a place where I would like to see a balance. I, I do recognize that our district need is far greater. I also recognize that perhaps in ten years, or I don't know when, this district and this board, and a new board maybe, might think about going out for another bond. And so I just kind of keep thinking of the trends. This may be a mute comment, or because if the state legislature decides to give us some guidelines, well, then we're done talking. I mean, we know what we can do. They've, but I, I, I'm trying to figure out the balance.
I think you make many good points. I will say that I think that the capital appreciation bonds as a structure has always been, it's been widely used for decades. I mean, I'll go back even before I even started working in just municipal bonds. Zeros have been a very important part. I mean, the state of Calif, I mean, the state of New York and Connecticut had programs called college savings programs that were all zeros. And they sold them to people who were grandparents so they could drive bonds for two hundred dollars for their grandchildren, and they could go to college and they'd have a thousand dollars. It's, it's a very useful structure, and I, and I think like with everything in every profession, certainly we saw it a lot in two thousand and eight in Wall Street, and we see it probably with architects in construction and everybody else. There have been some abuses and some carelessness. Not every consultant is as good as the next consultant. I mean, that's, it's hard for you as board members. You don't know. You have to listen to us and try to make judgments and rely upon staff. But I think that your, your programming, certainly, I remember, thirty years is not that far. It's only five years off. The guidelines are coming down as twenty-five years is because they are, I'm getting into the legal, so tell me to stop. They're trying to reverse the, or get rid of the government, the government code, capital appreciation bonds that are issued. Any bond that's issued beyond twenty-five years is issued under a different code in the California law. That's what they're trying to do. The four, the four to one ratio and the eight percent, I don't really have a comment about. I mean, I don't like the way they calculate the ratio, but I think those are good concerns. And as you go forward, as we've talked about with Ms. Chetey, when, if you need to borrow money for the high school district because you have projects to build, then these are the, these are exactly the conversations we should be having. And they'll be, will be very explicit. You'll see all the numbers, whatever they are. And when, and it's hard because we don't know when the interest rates are going to be like in one month or three months or five months. I don't know exactly what your timing is. But this is exactly the conversation we should be having with lots of charts and graphs, and you can see exactly what you have to think about. That's my job, so make sure you understand that. Okay?
Ms. Parker or Mr. Herring?
The one item that sticks out to the public when they see these numbers is that the debt load twenty years from now of six million, seven million, eight million. What I find missing, I would, I would like to see is, what is our total obligation that the taxpayers are going to have to pay for the next twenty, thirty years of, of all the bonds?
If all the bonds were issued?
If all, no, if, if, well, yeah, if all the bonds are issued.
Okay.
And compared to what we, if no more bonds are issued, what are the, what are the payments? It seems to me like we're talking in the elementary district of huge numbers that the taxpayers have to pay because they have to pay, for understanding, both the secondary and the elementary.
No, we might have to, that's a consideration. We should probably have to model it that way. I didn't think about the, the overlap, you know? That's a good point.
I'd just love to see, what are we obligating the taxpayers now, well after we're all gone and, won't bother me probably, but.
Well, you never know.
You never know, but, yeah, grandchildren. And I know there's a theory to let the next generation pay for it because they're going to use these schools that we're creating now that are so good. And because they're going to last fifty years. So there's always that, you know, the current generation's paying for what we have now and the bonds we have. And the next generation are going to be using the same facilities. And do they get them free and clear, or do they have some obligation too? And so I understand that, that logic. But I'd like to, I'd like for us to be able to say to the taxpayers, here's what the obligation is. We're, when we vote for this, this is a total obligation that we're putting on your shoulders for the next twenty, twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay. That's easy enough to do. It's, it's in this material, but it's more convoluted, so I'll be glad to do that for you, sir.
Ms. Parker?
Well, and whenever it, and, and I think that our intention is to sell more bonds this summer, correct? So that we can keep on with our facilities work, correct?
Well, that would be the, that would be the goal.
Yeah. So whenever it's time for that to come forward, I mean, I think it is helpful because, I mean, there's probably a hundred different ways you could play with this, and numbers will be changing constantly. But whenever it does come forward, it'd be, it would be helpful to see, I liked being able to see the repayment ratio. Especially because now we can compare it to what other districts are doing in a way that we hadn't been able to do it before. So I think that that would be just sort of a helpful little piece of, as we're making that decision.
Sure. Ms. Edelson?
I'm taking this all in. It's a lot to digest. And I, with Mr. Herring's comment that, and a prior presentation about our schools being, pretty much serving our population as it comes. You know, I think we really have to look at this well and, and, you know, maintain everything. So I, my concern is that we don't, cliche, kick the can and get us into further debt beyond our means. And I think, you know, as overseeing these important decisions. So thank you for whatever input you can provide us.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All three for coming. Appreciate it. David, your presentation was speechless.
I'm sure I'll be seeing you again soon.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Herring's going to excuse himself. We are going to move forward with the report on restorative approach to student discipline at Santa Barbara Junior High. And I don't know if that's Dr. Drody, Dr. Cash, Principal Garcia.
It's Mr. Sumter.
It's Mr. Sumter, sorry.
That's okay. You may recall, May of last year, we sent a team back to Denver Public Schools to observe the restorative approaches to discipline there, since they had some fully implemented programs in their district. And we were able to attend some training sessions in their district that they use to train their staff, and also visited a school site that has fully implemented the restorative approaches to student discipline. We got to watch it firsthand in action and visit with some of the students who were involved in that. And then in August, we brought the trainers to Santa Barbara to kick off the implementation of the pilot program at Santa Barbara Junior High School, which has now been in, has been in process, you know, for the half of this year. Tonight, you have an analysis of, of some year-to-date discipline data for Santa Barbara Junior High School for the past three years, including this year. And if you want to take a look at that information, and I'll get to it here, too. The top chart in this data shows three years of three different kinds of information. The first column of that top chart shows you numbers of incidents that were recorded in the student discipline Adam of Aries. And then the second column shows you the number of suspensions that resulted from those incidents, and then the number of expulsions. Keep in mind, this is just Santa Barbara Junior High and just first semester. So you can see some interesting numbers there in that, let me get to my notes. For the last two years, the number of incidents is fairly comparable. Not a lot of difference in that area. But in terms of the number of suspensions, a dramatic decline in the number of suspensions that resulted from those incidents. And I would attribute that to the implementation of the restorative approaches where alternatives to suspension are used to deal with incidents as they come up. And then the number of expulsions, well, we can brag that it was cut by fifty percent. And then in, in the bottom chart, you can see where I've separated this out by the numbers of incidents or the numbers of students with one or multiple incidents in different categories or brackets there. And what's interesting there, again, in the, this year and last year's numbers, fairly comparable for students with two or more incidents. However, the number of students with only a single incident increased fairly dramatically. But again, a drastic drop from that to the students, number of students with two or more incidents. So there's something, to me, that says it's, something's working to prevent them from being repeat offenders. And then a, another interesting number would be the total where there, you'll see, again, at the bottom of that chart, an increase from the eleven, twelve school year to the twelve, thirteen school year. Again, with fewer numbers of suspensions, even though there's more number of students being seen for some kind of disciplinary action. So to me, that speaks to the fact that the restorative approach is being implemented or being used frequently and with success to keep students in class, prevent them from being sent home and missing instruction, instructional time unless it's absolutely necessary or required by law. And so having said that, I'd like to ask the principal of Santa Barbara Junior High, Mr. Garcia, to come and share some of the in-the-trenches kind of anecdotal information and part of the implementation process for the school.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. And I'd just like to publicly thank Dr. Cash for allowing Santa Barbara Junior High to be the pilot school for restorative approaches and for the shout-out earlier for the dance moves. So thank you for that.
We will Google that, Principal Garcia.
You won't be disappointed.
Maybe we can have it on the big screen later. So Mr. Sumter ran through quickly how we prepared our staff for restorative approaches. And I just wanted to share how we prepared the students for restorative approaches. On the second day of our training in August, which we had over eighty percent of the teachers there, this was during their summertime, we discussed how best to instruct our eight hundred-plus students and our parents on restorative approaches. What we came up with was a two-week plan. On the first day of school, all teachers in every single class would talk about respect, what it meant to them and how they expected to see it in their classroom. The remaining two weeks, each teacher with their four classes that they still had left took the time to talk about each of the other, as we refer to them, five Rs. So we have respect, responsibility, repair, relationships, and reintegration. And we created a poster that's in every classroom, every office, and in every hallway. And we refer to this often. The reason why we wanted to have every teacher, every class, talking about this is oftentimes when we're trying to disseminate information to our students, we'll pick a particular department or a particular period. Maybe all English teachers will talk about something, or all teachers in period one will talk about something. What can happen there is students may look at, well, only my first-period teacher is interested or cares about this, or only my English teacher is interested or cares about this. We wanted to ensure that all students understood that all teachers were behind restorative approaches and were going to be practicing this day in and day out. The next piece is the questioning, which is an integral part to restorative approaches. Taking the time to talk to kids, helping them understand how their actions impacted not only themselves, but others. What a novel concept, teaching kids in school. Or teaching them about their actions. And so we run them through a series of questions. And we have these posters in every classroom and every office. And some teachers have actually placed them outside their door. So if that, they need to talk to a student in a more private setting, they have it right outside their door in the hallway. So we asked students, what happened? The second question, how do you feel about it? Often, we don't need to ask that question because it comes out in the what happened part. Who is harmed? Who is affected? What part are you responsible for? And then the key to restorative approaches, how do we fix it? This took a little time. Often with students, you'll get the shoulders up, or I don't know. But once they heard us asking these questions enough times from a variety of adults on campus, they actually will almost lead us through this process. And the fixing part has really empowered our students. that they are part of the solution. Not like years past where we tell them, this is what's going to happen. They're part of that. And we've had some creative solutions from the students. And we've seen that that then, really, we get some longevity with that student as far as being a repeat offender. And that's why I think here we have more incidences with one student and quite a few less as we go down, down the list here. The other reason why I feel that we have more this year, one incident compared to last school year, is that we are making a concerted effort to have a conversation with those kids, bring them into the office, talk about it, and then, of course, we document it. Whereas last year, it may be just, you know, that warning in the hallway. You know what? You do it again, you're gonna get some detention, you're gonna get yourself in more trouble. And then we ended up seeing the kid shortly after that. So taking a little bit more time, having a conversation, getting to know the student, and helping them get back on track. That's what we've done with the students, with the parents. We sent out a letter informing them what restorative approach is all about. And then at the first PTSA meeting, I led them through about a forty-five-minute mini, very condensed training of restorative approaches. So I'm not sure if everyone's seen the posters or the questions, so I'll just send them up here to Dr. Paz to be passed around then, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Principal Garcia.
As you might, yes, I'm sorry, I was gonna say that this upfront, there's a front-loading process in this that, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, that takes some concerted effort and time put into this upfront to develop the skills and the students to be able to, to, in many cases, use these questions or these skills without an adult having to step into it. So the goal is hopefully to give these kids the, the skills, necessarily the tools they need to deal with these things on their own. And maybe resolve the issues that they might face without an adult's intervention.
That's where I look forward to our school district expanding this into, as we will do next school year, all the junior highs. In, in two years, have it in all the high schools. And in three years, to be able to, to get it out in the elementary schools. So then that we can benefit from our elementary school students coming in. And as Mr. Sumter just mentioned, and we witnessed in Denver, students basically saying to the adults in Denver, can we go have a restorative conference in your class, in your classroom or your office without the adult there? They just, they took over, and they did it, and they worked through it. And then they came out and everything was solved. So what a way to, what a, we're really looking forward to be able to do that with our students.
We have made plans to send another team to Denver in May. We'll be sending a group of twelve this time because our, as Mr. Garcia mentioned, we will be expanding this into the rest of the other three junior high schools as well as Santa Barbara High School. So those eighth graders from Mr. Garcia's school feeding into there will carry this in with them and not just be left in the lurches after they leave the school.
Thank you, Mr. Sumter. Board, questions or comments, Ms. Parker?
I think I first need a little bit of clarification on the chart. So twelve, thirteen is fall semester. Ten, eleven, and eleven, twelve, is that also fall semester?
They are all as of the same date, January twenty-fifth.
As of the same date, okay. And it's kind of interesting to me, well, I think another piece that might have been interesting would be to include oh-nine, ten, and also the school population. Because about ten, eleven, I think Santa Barbara Junior had a jump in enrollment. And so it would be nice to sort of be able to compare it to the number of students that are there. But I think eleven, twelve was your first year there, Mr. Garcia.
Correct.
And so in looking at it, I also have a suspicion that you may have been bringing some different discipline approaches even before you started the official restorative approaches, methods. Because you see some pretty dramatically different numbers just from your first year as a principal there. So I'm sort of imagining that there were some cultural changes in terms of how, of how discipline was handled even, even before this all was implemented. And so in that way, it'd be kind of interesting to see the nine, ten numbers, to see if that, if that was part of the trend down. I think that this is great. I, I, I think it's something that we just, we need to keep monitoring and expect it to take some time to show, you know, full results, essentially. I think it's just gonna take some time for it really to be completely inculcated in Santa Barbara Junior's culture. And then, you know, as each school adds it on, it's still gonna take, you know, probably a couple of years for everybody to really fully engage with it.
You used a key term there when you said Santa Barbara Junior's culture. And is the culture changed, so, and that does take time.
Ms. Edelson?
I'm curious as to, I mean, the old scenario where you'd bring the two parties of the person, the perpetrator and the victim or the harm together and say, sit down and I want you to work this out. Or does that happen in the how do we fix it? Or is that more basically determined by this process of questions? Or do you not bring them together?
It depends on the situation. And prior to sitting any two students down, or even a teacher and a student, is you have to have a pre-conference where you meet with them individually and discuss the questions. There's a storytelling aspect of it and giving them just the opportunity to talk through how they interpreted what took place. And you do pose the question, how can we fix it so that they are thinking about it?
And are you doing this both with the harmed and the?
We're doing it with both, yes. Because the student who has been harmed needs to be empowered as well. And they need to have a voice in how they feel things should be taken care of. And there's not always the best scenario to get two students together if, if one has been harmed. We do have to look at the power dynamics. And you do not want to revictimize a student. So we tread very cautiously that when we do sit students down where there is a clear perpetrator, if you will, and victim, that we're doing the right thing. And sometimes we choose not to sit them down.
Or you give them the choice, hopefully?
We do, we do give them the choice. But some, and I, but I will say, though, there are times that we've made that choice.
Got it.
Just because we feel it's the best action at that time.
And I have a couple of questions. One, in your description, you mentioned that at the very beginning, day one, teachers expressed or defined what respect meant to them. I was curious if the students had the opportunity to then define it for themselves so that the teacher and the administrators could hear how students define respect.
And so what we asked our, our teachers to do is go beyond just looking at a poster with some words and some descriptions and almost a straight vocabulary. Here's the word respect, this is what it means. So many of our teachers, and particularly in our English classes, found stories, found text where they could integrate these words into their lessons. So it was more natural feeling rather than today, we're going to learn about, and, and just a word. We talked to, you know, to our science teachers about using the word responsibility, using it within a lab. You need to be responsible to your partner to get the information correct. We need to be responsible for the equipment so that we can continue having labs. So that, again, it was this natural fit. And, and yes, asking students how they would like to be respected, how they show respect, how perhaps they've been disrespected. And so, again, we can all have these conversations about it and may have more real-world application to these words.
And then you also mentioned that you have seen and heard some creative solutions. And I'd like to see if you could give us an example of one of the most creative
The most creative?
outcome solutions, problem-solving that you've heard.
The most creative, and I think Dr. Cash has even shared this particular story, is that we did have two students, literally on the first day of school, have a problem with each other. And it all stemmed from an issue that took place during the summer. And it involved the taking of a hat. And once we met with the students individually, came to determination that it was all about respect. One felt disrespected because his hat was taken from him. So we sat them down and said, okay, we need to fix this. And again, just like I shared earlier, it was the shoulders up and I don't know, and looking around, not wanting to make eye contact. We were insistent and kept talking about it. And finally, the one student who had taken the hat said, well, I don't have your hat anymore, but I have three other hats. I'd be willing to give you one of those. And the student who had his hat taken said, okay, that sounds good to me. So they fixed it. I, you know, in my head, I was thinking, well, he should go out and buy a new hat, but this is, this is a lot simpler, it's a lot more meaningful because he's giving something of his own to that student. So I thought it was great that they came up with that solution on their own.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then this question's actually for the district. So, Mr. Sumter, one of the things we heard last year was the importance of, in some ways, taking it slow, assessing our progress and our ability to expand restorative justice. It's not just something that we create a brand-new policy and then it works. As we think about expanding to three junior high, three additional junior highs and an additional high school, and, I mean, a high school that's so big, how, how do we think about that? Because one of the recommendations we got a year ago was that we make sure that, that the sites have the capacity to take on a culture change.
Right. Well, the idea is really gonna need to be one where we do take it slow in the sense that, well, let me put it this way. Just about every school wanted to take this on to begin with. And they were already chomping at the bit. So we kind of had to slow them down. And there was some disappointed staff that didn't get to take part in it and are, and are ready to go.
Still are disappointed staff.
Yes.
That, that we're doing only junior highs next year and not all, everybody.
So part of the process for us is to be able to develop the skills and, and provide the tools to our own staff to use this and then become trainers themselves to our, our staff over time. And be able to take the tools that they've used and have been successful with and impart that onto those who are at the, just starting to take baby steps of implementation. But not do it with so many schools is overwhelming, and they just feel like giving up.
We've learned a lot. Mr. Garcia has done a fantastic job leading Santa Barbara Junior. There's a lot of lessons that he has already begun to share with teachers and staff at Santa Barbara High School. And I know he and his staff will be at the other junior highs. If you haven't done it already, we'll be out there talking to them as well. And it's, the, the belief is, is that it'll be somewhat different culturally at each school because of each school's particular place. And we're still committed to the idea of going slow so that we do it right. And so that when people know that they're involved in restorative approaches, they know what it is.
And I appreciate it. I, I think there's no doubt that this is the right direction to go. And so I just want to make sure that we have the capacity to really embrace a new approach in our district. Dr. Paz?
It will take years, though.
It will, it will, it will take years, yes.
So, did a lot of mention for, about students and then teachers. And I'm just very curious, as a new board member, to understand more about the role support staff play, do they play an equal role as teachers do? And, because obviously, kids are spending more time in, in a particular classroom, except for those moments when it's in between classrooms, at lunch, perhaps after school. So if you could talk a little bit about what role support staff play as well in terms of all this? And even when we're looking at expansion, about how they play a role in, in terms of being a team of individuals that take on restorative justice at a particular site?
So our instructional aides would probably be our, our largest group of, of support staff on our campus. We took the time when they came back to work to train them as well because they obviously would be seeing something different happening in how the teachers, how administrators, how counselors interacted with students. So we wanted to ensure that they had the understanding and the skills to also work with students with restorative approaches. So we have done that. I actually will be doing a training this Friday for the student teachers through UCSB and having them for about four hours to run them through the, the application of restorative approaches.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Edelson had one last question.
I've had people, and I just want to pose this to you and hear your response, say, this sounds really soft, like we're, you know, all sort of the typical rules of the game as far as how a school reacts to a discipline. How would you respond to that?
It is not soft. We still have our steps that we take with students from expulsion to suspension to detention. And that's why we decided to call it restorative approaches because we're looking at an approach as the whole child with all the tools available to us.
So would you, because I'm thinking about it, this is like before, it's catching it as a preventative
Yes.
issue. It's teaching the child how to resolve these issues
Right.
before it gets bigger.
Exactly.
So that would be, okay.
Exactly.
It does not replace the traditional forms of discipline, but it is something to supplement that and, and like you said, be more proactive approach to dealing with events.
Teach through the moment, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if I could, I'm just gonna say what needs to be said and that we have a very disproportionate number of poor Latino males in particular that have been subject to suspension as compared to other groups in our school system. And a significant purpose in restorative approaches is to provide the opportunity for the culture of a school that allowed that to happen to change itself so that we're not kicking kids out of school, we're keeping them in school. And from, from my perspective, just as a, as a, as an educator, I think, I, I'm just thrilled at what Santa Barbara Junior High School has done for us and getting us marching down this path so that every student in every school can have that experience.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Sumter, thank you, Principal Garcia.
You're welcome.
We look forward to hearing more and seeing more and seeing how it grows in our school district.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And we are moving on to proposal for summer school enrichment program with Santa Barbara Education Foundation. And I want to thank everybody in the audience for their patience.
It's only a quarter to nine.
They've been here for a while, waiting.
So, so, so I'm looking for some guidance. I want to, I want to tell you that one of the things that I think our community has missed for over a decade is an opportunity for our students to have coursework during the summer, which allows them to enrich their path toward high school graduation and enrich themselves personally. It's been a, one of the tragedies of the state government. Funding for K-12 education has really forced school districts to eliminate everything but intervention and remedial programs for students. And so districts all over the state and all over the nation began looking at ways to partner with community agencies in order to continue to provide enrichment courses for kids. And one of those ways that, that districts have done that is to partnership if they have, if they're fortunate to have an education foundation in their community is with their education foundation. And so tonight, I'm looking for some guidance from you on moving forward, formally with a partnership with the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, to provide our high school students to begin with, with an enrichment summer school program beginning this summer. The Education Foundation would offer courses in all core areas plus electives for a fee. The fee would be waived for all students qualified for free and reduced lunch. Probably would run about the same period of time as our previous enrichment summer programs, twenty-five to thirty days. One semester classes would be about two hours per day. We'd, of course, want them taught by our great Santa Barbara Unified School District teachers. And it's really, I think, a great opportunity for us to do something in partnering with our ed foundation for the students in our community. I attached a sample or a draft contract that I have been working with our legal counsel on and fine-tuning. There's a couple of other issues that we want to include in it and fine-tune, I think, before bringing it back if, if the board would like me to. But I think it's, it represents, I think, a, a great opportunity. And I believe the next step in our partnership with the Education Foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, comments, direction, Ms. Parker?
We do have public comments on this. I thought it might be nice for us to go ahead and take that right now.
Let's take that public comment.
From the speaker card. From the speaker card, Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. This is an interesting proposal. It certainly does address a need that's out there, and that's the enrichment classes. We have seen severe challenges to our programs based on the inability of kids to have time and their schedules to take these classes. We certainly see this as a, the partnership with the Ed Foundation as being a very productive one. They've been some of our heroes in our community in terms of supporting public education. There are also issues that need to be resolved, including making sure that we have quality educators out there, people who have been fingerprinted and gone through all the background checks that we need to do. We would obviously like to see our folks here locally who have had years and years of no pay increases to have an opportunity to earn a few extra dollars and to provide that quality education. But there are just such a vast number of issues that are involved. We'd like to see a much more clearly expanded plan of explanation of how this is going to work, where it's going to work, who it would affect, and how it would be run. Just in thinking of it and talking with Ms. Yabe a few minutes ago, you know, we probably came up with fifteen or twenty points that needed clarification. Planning on meeting with her this week to hopefully gain some more information about the plan. But we've always done a great thing at our public schools and it always makes me wonder why we would want to try to reinvent a wheel that has worked so well, when we have the opportunity, the facilities and the great staff, and of course, a very needy student body. So I hope that this plan is vetted more publicly and more clearly before we, the board chooses to move forward on it. SPTA would like to be involved in that planning process so that we can make sure that we have our questions answered. And with that, I'll thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Board comments, direction? Ms. Parker?
Okay. I'm very interested and excited about this possibility. And also, a little conflicted because it's this funky hybrid that I haven't seen before of public credit for essentially a private program. And, I mean, the reality is, is there would, you know, those opportunities, if we don't have students pay for them, they won't be there. It's not as if it's something that we could do, we've had to eliminate everything. But I guess I just want a little bit more feedback on the legalities around it and how it works. Is it simply because it's an outside agency that's running the program that, that we can charge students?
Yes.
Okay. And so it would be completely would, how, beyond the fact that it would be located on our campuses and would, and we would presumably have some sort of agreement to provide credit for students, assuming that they, that they complete these summer programs according to whatever standards are set up for them. What other role, would the district have any other role or would just, it need to be completely done by an outside organization?
It would be done by the education foundation. They will, as the sample agreement indicates, they will pay for the use of the facilities. They will hire the staff. They will hire the administrators, the administrator, probably the only one that would be needed to be responsible for the program. The board will make the decision on how, there are numerous options on how to provide or authorize the credit or accept the credit. It's something that high schools do regularly already in relationship to private schools, online schools, home schools, schools in foreign countries. We have, we have a pretty straightforward process in how we do that, but there's also a very easy legal process that the board can engage by simply passing a resolution that if the courses meet the requirements that are already dictated in board policy, then the board would grant credit for completion of those, those courses. This is something that's been done in districts in our, in Southern California with their community partners for, some for over twenty years. So it's not, this is not like we're on the bleeding edge of some reform or revolution. This is just, we're going, hey, this is maybe a good idea for our kids. Let's, let's join in and try to make it work. So, and they have to do all the things that Mr. Wheeler alluded to. Of course, we ensure that, you know, staff was fingerprinted. One of the agreements would have to be that the Ed Foundation would agree to pay the teachers what our hourly rate is for, that we've agreed to with the SPTA, so.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Ms. Idelson and I, both as high school parents, we know that our students, our own children are always seeking to, you know, I have a student who will be a senior next year who wants to take two science classes and so is looking to take an art class over the summer. And there, you know, it just provides so much more flexibility to students. If we have something beyond remediation, that's, that they can, so they can get certain requirements out of the way. Health, for example, would be huge if we could get that taken care of over the summer.
Yes. And the freshman focus class. And one of the issues that would be really important for us as well is the connect, the connection for English learner students from eighth grade to ninth grade, having an opportunity to remain in a structured English development instructional program through, through the entire year, which we can't offer right now through our remedial intervention program, but we could offer, or the Ed Foundation could offer.
At no charge?
Yes. Well, for those that are qualified for free and reduced lunch.
For those particular students, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I think, I think it's worth exploring further, absolutely.
So actually, you just brought up a point that I, was one of my many questions, but I'm just gonna ask this one and then pass it over to Ms. Idelson. But how will the fee structure work? Is it on a sliding scale? I mean...
Sliding scales, many districts have tried. They're just impossible to do. You spend too much time verifying income.
So then, how would it work? How would someone who doesn't have means take advantage of this opportunity?
Well, if they, if they qualify for free and reduced lunch, they're a student in our district, then the class is free.
Okay. All right. Ms. Idelson?
I, I think I'm very much in favor of this. And I think a perfect example is go to City College during the summer and you see a tremendous number of our high school kids there, to the point, some of these classes are more high school than college age. I think, though, there's a lot of things that we would need to look at as far as the rigor, you know, the rigor of the classes, the scheduling of the classes, that they be, you know, accomplished efficiently. I mean, for, summer school at City College is six weeks, three-hour classes, say, for Spanish for four days a week. So that's, you know, a very set schedule that, you know, that's what's required to match a typical semester, so.
Well, we'd, we'd put it identical to what we did in the past. I don't, I don't, I don't think we would be able to ratchet the rigor up any higher than what we awarded credit for in the past, nor would we want to lessen it.
But you'd have to condense the time, obviously.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that, right there, makes it more rigorous.
Yes.
Dr. Puss?
Dr. Cash, you mentioned that this has been done in a number of other locations and across a period of time. I would be curious for staff to come back and talk to us about those experiences, those particular school districts, or even challenges that they face, and how do we, we propose to overcome those? So that we're kind of looking at, and I'm sure you have already started to think about that. But that would be of interest to me, so that we are kind of making sure we're covering all the bases and that we're looking at not reinventing the wheel, but taking those good experiences from other, other places and applying them here so that we are trying to have a program that is as good as it can possibly get.
I think one of the issues I didn't mention is that we would want to start smaller than, than, and this is, this is the kind of thing that grows over time, because there's ultimately more demand and the demand expands grade level-wise, not just within grade levels. Because parents will say, well, this is great. I'd like my seventh grader to take Chinese this summer, or whatever the it might be. And I can tell you that when I began discussing this with the executive director of the Ed Foundation, Margie Yabe, that she herself has done a tremendous amount of research and contacted the district that's closest to us, that has probably the most successful program, it's Los Virginas. And they've had it going on for ten years. So we've learned a lot from them so far. The sample agreement that you have in there is reflective of stuff that we've learned from them. And so, and I should also point out that I've asked Alex Sheldon, who is a teacher at San Marcos High School, to help put all this together as we move forward from the district side.
And I have a few questions or comments. One of them is, in this proposal, it did mention that the foundation would be responsible for utilities. Does technology count as utilities? If there's something that goes wrong with the wireless, if there's support, is that part of it? I mean, what about our tech staff having to go out? Is that all included or is that going to be in addition? And if we don't have answers now, because this is only a conference item, that's fine. We can bring those back. So I did have a question about that. I know that we don't have a Schedule B, which is a list of the classes that we would offer, so at some point, I'd like that to come back to the board. The other piece, I thought, is just logistics, because it is a private entity offering public courses. Do the students then get a separate transcript? Because it's a private entity, or is it something that's automatically noted into our transcript system? And, I mean, there's some very specific things regarding to the copies. There's no charge for use of the equipment, but is there a charge for the supplies associated with the equipment? And then another thing was just, will the students and the staff have the opportunity to evaluate the success of the program? So to make sure that the quality doesn't change, that we're still offering, some, will there be, that we're still offering the courses that we intend to offer at, with the rigor and the quality, will we have some feedback after a pilot year? I understand that this proposal is potentially a three-year program or a three-year agreement with the foundation. And I actually appreciate Mr. Wheeler's comments, because I would like to see priority given to our district staff as far as being hired for these positions. Not only do they know the students, they know the curriculum, and I think that there's advantage there. And so if we could consider that as part of the proposal, I think that that would be, that'd be important to consider. So that was just a list of my questions and comments. Ms. Parker?
Just a clarification, Dr. Cash. For this first summer, would the idea be that it's at the three high schools or just one high school, or?
Depends. Probably one high school. Could be at all three. Kind of depends on...
One high school, but maybe open to all district students?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So all high school students would have the opportunity, even if it's only located on one campus?
Correct. And currently, kind of do that with the...
With the remedial piece. I, I guess, the only thing that I want to throw out there is that, that students are, high school students and incoming freshmen are starting the balloting process now. And, and if they, for example, were able to take a health class or an art class over the summer, that they could get, you know, their schedule requests might be quite different. And so I, I know that the, that master scheduling piece is a process, but I would like us to get this figured out as soon as possible so that if students want to make some changes, that that can get done right now.
Well, the plan is to come back March 12th with a formal agreement. It won't have all the details that Ms. Lamone has requested, I'm afraid. I don't believe that I can answer all those questions until we've even done it for a summer. Because I think there'll be, there'll be things that, no matter what we think of, we will not have thought of. But, I mean, some of those things, transcripts, technology and evaluation, those are easy, kind of...
Well, and I, and I hope that what would come back to us, in addition to, to my list of questions and comments, is also a fee structure of some sort. Because I, I, I don't know...
Yes.
...how to imagine. Are we talking about a family paying, I mean, X or is it Y? And I don't know. Is it hundreds of dollars? Because I also could foresee that if we have our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, able to take free classes, I want to make sure that they can take not just certain classes, but that they would be eligible for all the classes that are being offered.
Well...
Not that they would take every single class offered, but...
An important issue is the maximum classes any student can take would be two, because we're gonna run them eight to ten and ten to twelve, essentially.
I just wouldn't want them to take a class that only an English language learner could take, I mean, or needed to take. I think that it would be important to make sure that they were eligible for whatever classes was offered. But then I also think of, so if we have those that won't blink at whatever cost we have, and then those who would have support, what happens to those in the middle? And would there be folks or scholarships available? Is that something that we need to think as long-term? Because I think that, I don't want to disproportion any socioeconomic class in any, in any way. I think that, I'm here as a public school board member responsible for all students, thinking about all students. So I just want to make sure that we think about those opportunities.
This has to be a moneymaker for the Ed Foundation. So that's the bottom line.
And it can make...
They can't offer classes that don't have enough students paying for it.
Right. And I will put access and equity over making money, so...
Well, we couldn't offer the program, is the issue.
So, I think we're gonna have to think about that, because, because for me, I think it's important that we think about what happens if students come forward and say, well, I'm not in the free and reduced program and my parents are working two, three jobs, but I don't qualify for this. Because I see that happen over and over. We live in Santa Barbara. It's, a lot of families are going to struggle to pay here, so I will personally put access and equity over making money. And I understand the need for the foundation to make money, but this is, I mean...
Well, I mean, they can't offer classes where they, they are paying to hold the classes.
Okay. Well, again, I, for me, it will be important to think about how all students will have access to this. So I appreciate and acknowledge everything that the foundation has done for us, but I would hope that with all the folks in the room, all the folks who aren't in the room, we can be creative about how we can think about some of these issues. Perhaps that may not come up. Perhaps we will have no families or no students come up to us in year one that tell us that they're in the in-between stage. But, you know, for me, I'm thinking about all of our students at large, so that's where I stand. Dr. Puss?
Yeah, I, I think about it in the same way, in a similar light of looking at access in general, because one of the things that, you know, we're always looking for is making sure all our students are, are having equal access to opportunities. And we are by de facto sponsoring this, and we don't want to play, at least in my opinion, a role in appearing that we are contributing to an equal access to educational opportunities. And that, that would be a concern for me. I mean, I would, I would hope that we'd have discussions maybe with the Scholarship Foundation of Santa Barbara, look at opportunities, if that could be a funding source, or something along those lines, to possibly defray costs for those families who may find themselves caught in the middle, so to speak. And that happens often. If we look at other areas of educational opportunities, give you one close to my heart, preschool, it's often those people who are at the bottom, who could afford to go to preschool and attend Head Start, and those families who have the means to send their kids to the best preschools. And everyone in the middle gets lost. And does that have differential outcomes for students? Of course it does. And I think it's along the lines of what our board president is saying, and I, and I would hope that we, we, we look at other sources of funding outside of the education foundation to possibly partner with, to look at the opportunity, so. Thank you.
All right. So I think that that's the direction. Dr. Cash? Received direction there. All right. So, moving on, hearing no additional discussion, we have a report on SB 48, the Fair Education Act.
And if anybody wants to make public comment on this, so it would help us if you turn in a speaker card at this point?
So, we have a presentation tonight from Elise Simmons and Fran Wagonett, our two awesome assistant principals, who are working with our social studies, Common Core Transition Team to help implement the Fair Education Act. And we've also been working with several nonprofits that are here in the room tonight. And I've asked one of them to come forward, and that will be Dr. Jackie Reed. And she's brought with her a very famous professor from the University of California, Santa Barbara, to talk a little bit about her nonprofit, and that is Teaching Fair. So we'll start with the doctor. Have you, are you officially Dr. Reed, Jackie?
Yes.
Oh, we'll start with Dr. Reed. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, first of all, can you hear me? Thank you, Dr. Cash. And I would also like to thank the Santa Barbara School District Board for this opportunity to share briefly, let's see, it's about 9:05, about our organization. Dr. Anissa Stewart and I are former classroom teachers and current teacher educators and researchers. And we launched our nonprofit in January of 2012. And we officially became 501(c)(3) in May of 2012. And our organization seeks to address what we call the new multiculturalism. And we think of this as a transformative approach to creating a sustainable future for all Californians. First, I will provide a brief overview of the organization. And next, Dr. Stewart, as president of the board, will share about the members of the board, as well as some of the faculty members who are on our advisory board. The mission of our nonprofit is to design and implement professional development workshops for K through 12 teachers that will provide highly practical instruction for the roles, the study of the roles and contributions of all people to the economic, political, and social development in California and the United States. We created this organization for the following reasons. To engage K through 12 educators in a collaborative effort to provide opportunities for all students to develop academic literacies necessary for college and career readiness. To develop and help implement inclusive curriculum that provides multiple perspectives and multiple identity contributions across disciplines, and within a sustained, inclusive school climate, which meets the Common Core state standards, develops cultural proficiencies, and enables digital literacy development. In order to foster a new relationship of the social sciences and humanities to K-12 education in California, thus providing opportunities for students to build what we call historical literacies, learning to read and reason with historical texts and evidence. Historical literacy is a way of seeing the world, to know how to ask questions about where information comes from, about how it comes into our hands in the first place, and the question of utmost importance, whether we should believe it. Thus, the ability to evaluate information from the past, from many primary sources, so not just possess the knowledge, but to know how to build knowledge. To design curriculum and professional development opportunities for K-12 teachers with teachers, administrators, community group leaders, and university professors. To provide opportunities for students to conduct original research through analysis of local historical documents and our interviews of local community members in the form of perhaps a Community History Day competition or other creative projects we co-design with teachers, administrators, and the like. And finally, but probably not least, or in the end, because we see this as an ongoing process, and I think we want to ensure that that is made clear to everyone, that we see this as something that is going to grow and evolve as we move forward. But to create and maintain a virtual space for teachers to interact, collaborate, and reflect on what students are learning from participation in these lessons. So next, Dr. Stewart.
Can you speak to us about the board?
For, you know, just a little background to mention that the History of the Fair Education Act, on July 14, 2011, Governor Jerry Brown signed into law Senate Bill 48, or what's known as the Fair Education Act, which requires schools to provide general instruction in textbooks that include information on the contributions of Native Americans, African Americans, Mexican Americans, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, European Americans, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans, persons with disabilities, and other ethnic and culture groups, unquote. This law took effect in January of 2012, concerns instruction in history and social science, including the course of study in grades one through 12. Obviously, this bill is a very important bill, an urgent need now exists for an accessible, comprehensive, technology-driven, research-based courses that meet this new California standard. The board essentially is something that I joined largely, I'm professor and chair of the Department of Black Studies at UCSB. And since coming in 2008, I've been concerned to extend out from the normal purview of what's considered black issues to really look at social justice across many different groups, and how it's evolved and changed as it has migrated into the curriculum, not only at the higher education level, but also at K through 12. And I've also felt that the university in particular needs to be more involved, and more accessible, and more responsive to the public school system, wherever those universities exist. So in course of putting together the board, we tried to draw on a diverse group of people at the university. One of the people, Dr. Eileen Boris, who is chair and professor of Feminist Studies, who's worked a lot with issues of labor, and also women's issues, Betsy Brenner, who's a PhD in, who's the Department of Education Chair, Diane Fugina, who is a professor and chair of Asian American Studies, Aida Hortada, who's chair and professor of Chicano Studies, and a host of other people that we're sort of trying to draw on to give us an opportunity for a conversation to go on between teachers at the K through 12 level, but also academics who actually quite often don't concern themselves with the challenges that are going on in school districts. We're planning a number of initiatives, one of them, the possibility of a workshop for teachers in April. We see ourselves as facilitators of a conversation. We don't see ourselves as dominating, or maximizing, or having all the knowledge. In fact, what we're hoping is that, you know, with other groups and nonprofits, we can create an environment in which there can be conversation that goes on between academics, teachers, administrators, but also local groups and activists and advocate groups who have been involved with these issues for a longer time than just the Fair Education Act, and bring to it also a kind of expertise that we can benefit from as we kind of carry on this struggle. We feel like this is actually an opportunity for us to really rethink, especially with the Common Core standards coming, a new way of educating students for the 21st century in which they begin to think about other people. It's not some sort of object that they have to learn about in a kind of uncritical way, but a kind of empathetic learning about other people, and then therefore, learning about themselves through the process of these various transitions, really in history and social studies education, that I think should occur in the wake of the passage of the Fair Act. So that's what we're doing. We're glad to be invited here to talk and to continue the conversation, and particularly to learn from others who are actually in the trenches and who are doing this very, very important work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Fran and Elise, are you guys ready?
Thank you, Jackie and Jeffrey, for setting that up for us so nicely. And I want to thank the board for the opportunity to be here, and to Dr. Cash for, you know, thinking back as having been a student who did not see herself represented in history, and becoming a history teacher, and seeing where we've come in the 30 years since I was in high school. I just have to indulge, thank you for indulging me in being able to say that this is a pretty spectacular time that we're in. So, with my personal feelings aside, I want to move on from, you know, how did we get to our plan? And so we're going to share our plan with you tonight. We can go to the next slide. You want me to click? Okay. So, as was already shared, the law was passed in the summer of 2011, and went into law in January 2012. Even with my administrator voice? No. Okay. It went into law. And we really, I want to explain to you our process for going through, you know, how did we come up with our plan for not just following the law, but really implementing it and integrating it into what we do? And we looked at the word of the law. And the word of the law itself is straightforward. We said, yes, we can do that. How do we do that? We could make a checklist, and go off the checklist, and check off, do some activities, and we'd be good in terms of the law. Good. But that's not good enough for our district and for our students. And so, we really looked at what is the spirit of the law? And the Fair Act ensures that the historical contributions of folks with disabilities, LGBT people are accurately and fairly portrayed. And that was the spirit of the law, that within the classroom, that students would see themselves, that there would be mirrors, and that all students would be seen. But that also they'd look through windows as well. And that it's by looking through windows into other people's reality that we really learn about who we are as a group. So, it wasn't good enough for us to just look at the word of the law and follow that, and check some boxes off. We really wanted to make sure that no one was tokenized in the process, that this became, transformative was a word that Jackie used, that we really transformed the way that we teach history to our students. And so we saw the Common Core, this huge undertaking, as an opportunity to not just implement this law, but to do it right, and have it be something that's integrated into what we do. And so, where we're going to go from now is that Elise is going to share with you how we are building that capacity, how we're going deeper, how we're integrating the Fair Education Act into what we do.
Thank you, Fran. So I'm going to share with you where we've been, where we are, and where we're going to be going in terms of the SB 48 Teaching Fair Act. Last spring, we conducted an audit of the instructional materials. So you see up on the screen, this is what we did last spring. And we looked for, this happened at the high school level. And the teachers individually looked for bias, intentional omission of the role and contributions of persons with disabilities and LGBTQ Americans. And at that point, we deemed that all our materials met a minimal level of compliance. At the same time, we also met, as a committee, three times, to discuss those instructional materials, to discuss the law, to talk about what should our implementation be, what are the needs of the teachers of the schools? And they, all of the members that met, each high school sent two to three members, as well as an administrator, they brought back the legislation to the history departments. And they had a department meeting where they discussed the legislation. And really, at that point, a lot of it was the word of the law. What's the word of the law, and let's look at our materials at that point? Next slide. Oh, I have it. It's late. Oh, there. Okay. This year, this is what we've accomplished this year. In November, there was a meeting with community organizations. And at that meeting, we had a variety of representatives, local, as well as a couple folks from up north on our talking on phone conference, where Fran and I shared the district plan, in particular, the Common Core implementation plan, and how the implementation of the SB 48 Act would be implemented and integrated into that. And we also discussed and heard the many different ways that the agencies could participate in our implementation. Then, just very recently, the Transition Team for the History Social Science met on February 6th. And that's where each site sent PLC leads from the history content areas. So each high school sent three members, three to four members. Each junior high sent two to four members. And we met, and at that meeting, we talked about Common Core, as well as we spent the afternoon talking about SB 48 legislation. And we shared with them a very exciting opportunity, which will be on April 19th, which will take place out at UCSB, the mini-conference that Dr. Stewart, Professor Stewart mentioned. And that's, at that mini-conference, the entire Transition Team will be attending that, as well as other members from school sites. They are very interested in attending the mini-conference. At that mini-conference, there'll be a morning of, series of Q and As, and conversations taking place with other professors and notable figures across the nation. And there's Dr. Stewart, and I'll go there still here, Jackie can maybe share some of that information with us. And then the afternoon, we'll have an opportunity to do some co-constructing of lessons, some mini-workshops where the teachers can take what they've learned and really start to figure out how to implement in just all the different resources and information that they're receiving into their curriculum. And then on June 10th and 11th, there'll be the district-wide professional development. And the History Social Science Team, we've spent a long time, and we still are, digging into just knowing the content standard, excuse me, the Common Core standards. And we're going, that's quarter one, and then we'll be moving on to quarter two very soon here, and wrapping that up, or really digging into it on June 10th and 11th, where we'll be reviewing the materials and resources through the lens of the new Common Core standards, as well as the SB 48 legislation. And for next year, we will, as a district, be focused on looking at quarter three and quarter four. I think phase is actually the new term we're using, in regards of the Common Core. And that's where teachers will be creating lessons and assessments. And again, they'll be implementing the Common Core state standards, as well as the SB legislation, SB 48 legislation. The site administrators will monitor the implementation and fidelity to the legislation, as well as, we are very excited to continue our work with Dr. Jackie Reed, as well as Dr. Stewart, with the Teachers for Study of Educational Institutions, or Teaching Fair. So we're excited about continuing that work with them next year.
Great. Thank you. Board questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
So just to clarify on your slide, the last, the one that's on the 1314 school year. So it's not just the creation of lessons and assessments, it's also the implementation?
Yes. Sorry. And that's where the assessments will come into play, is assessing students, and are they actually learning the material? Yes.
So I guess one question that I have is, I'm sure that there are teachers that have just naturally included this always in their lessons. And do you have, do you know which teachers those are? Have they talked about what they do?
Yes. There are a few teachers across the district. And I can think of one in particular, at Dos Pueblos. At this point, the opportunities that we've had have been mostly focused on focusing on the word and the spirit of the law. And then this idea of, very excited working with UCSB and the resources, and talking about designing those lessons and uni... about designing those, those lessons and units that will be integrated into their curriculum.
Is the idea that it would be like in a particular class or is it going to be sort of across social studies classes in general?
I think we originally talked about it should be US history, American government, and eighth grade US history, and really look at through American history. There's more of a move now that we can talk about people's contributions regardless of what history class it is, or for that matter, English class or science, you know, we, the first prosthetic was developed in 300 B.C. That can be, that can be integrated in. So I don't think we want to limit ourselves, but more, and again, it's not about are we checking off the box and following the law, but are we being inclusive of the information that we share with our students and what is the lens that we look through? So.
My favorite comment that really got me excited about all of this was when we were working on February 6th, and we had a seventh grade world history teacher, junior high say, very excited, she goes, "I cannot wait to do this. You know, we just spent the entire morning talking about how important it is for our students to think like a historian and understand multiple perspectives, and this is exactly our opportunity to teach that skill and that, in, and be able to just relook at everything that we do." And this is again, a world history teacher, and she was just very energized and excited about just looking at her own practice from a multiple perspective, and so that really, just at that point, I went, great, this is, we're going to take this opportunity for everyone to do it, and they're very excited about it.
I think also, and this goes back even to your previous question, but we are aware that people have holes in terms of their own knowledge of individuals and events and trends, because the history that we learned was, we, most of us look through windows. And so we know that we need to fill in those holes, and that's, that's the role where we, we look at our resources, we look at our community, who can we reach out to and educate our teachers in those ways.
Dr. Bass?
I'm excited about this. This is, this is so cool. Especially the perspective of looking at it beyond just a couple of classrooms and social studies. Because when you look at all the contributions from the variety of different groups we have present on a particular campus, it goes the spectrum, you know, and sometimes I get pigeonholed at thinking, oh, it's only this, you know, and oh, it's the exception, oh, it's the, and it's great to look at it from, from a broader perspective to say, no, you know, contributions are from every walk of life, from every spectrum, from everything that we're doing every day, from something we may touch as a piece of technology to something you're doing in the classroom, to something that was invented in terms of lighting, whatever that may be. So I'm really happy to hear that you are taking that broader perspective and looking at it that way because we need to take that approach. And sometimes it's, it's not often seen that way, and I think it's, like you're saying, we have a certain history that we're looking at, and that lens is only the lens that we're bringing, and that's our own history that we bring with it. So thank you very much for doing that.
We know that it, we have our strategic plan in the idea of cultural proficiency and that that, the Common Core calls for that. And so, as was mentioned before, it's a very ripe time to take advantage and do all the work together moving forward. So thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
Yeah, I, ditto that. I think as Common Core comes in, it sounds like that'll be a great opportunity to, you know, introduce this and then have assessment, and, you know, I mean, the whole thing will fall into place nicely. Thank you for all the work.
And I think that this is great. I do have a few questions. When you talked in your, you gave out, you provided a plan for us as far as timeline and how it's moving forward. And when you use the word implementation, do you mean that that's when it's going to be seen in the classroom? So I'm trying to figure out, when does it, besides these, what sounds like maybe isolated cases right now? Is that happening? When does it, when does the district see it systemically? Or is it already happening systemically? Like, when does a student hear and start to see some of this in the classroom? And I don't know that I could extract that from what's been shared.
When, when Mr. Garcia was sharing about restorative justice and we were talking about transformation and a change of culture, I think we're seeing the same thing here. There are people who've been doing this before the law came. We are seeing more teachers implementing it, and it will, it will be mission creep, I think. But, and some, some will be quicker to come along and others will not, and so that's where the administrator monitoring piece, and we specifically put that in 2013, 14 because we wanted to give teachers time to create the lessons and get going. But our expectation is that there are people adhering to the law now, but that next year, that's the expectation. Would you, I mean, that's, that's the agreement, is that next year, full force, it's the expectation that our teachers will be teaching.
Teaching, okay.
Teaching what we, what the law says they need to be teaching.
And then, and I don't know what number slide is, but it says, Spring 2012 Audit of Instructional Materials. Can you define what minimal level of compliance means? What is, as opposed to maximum level? What is, what does that mean?
We, what that means there is that we found that there was no bias or an intentional omission. Now, we also know that there was omissions. I mean, basically, that's what, but there's no intentional. And so for us, minimal compliance means that no obvious overt biased and intentional omission in our textbook instructional materials.
All right, and so the goal will be that there is awareness and intention as we move forward?
That when we look at our instructional materials, that they are making sure that, yeah, there is no, that they include.
There's intentional inclusion.
There's intentional inclusion, yes. And that, the exciting part of this is that a lot of teachers have been tied to their textbook, and that has to do with, with the standards and the assessments. And we're going to have to look at additional resources, and that's another reason why we're very excited to work with our partner, community partners, is to, is to find those resources and have access to them, and then figure out the pedagogy to help our students have access to them and be able to really dig in and critically think about the information.
And I think that you raise an important point, that if folks are following the textbooks, it makes it just a little bit more difficult for them to include this because the textbooks were published prior to the law passing. So I think that that will be important. I also want to commend you and just our district and our teachers because I think that when things happen at the state level, it, they don't always coincide with timing and planning. And so I know how much work it's been to just roll out Common Core. And so I know that you can't walk on any campus right now without teachers or someone talking to you about their changes and Common Core and the PLCs and all this good stuff that comes with it. So I think that although the timing may not feel like ideal for folks because it's a lot of different new, new things coming into the curriculum, thinking about the standards, thinking about how we assess students, it is what it is. And I think that that's the approach that the district and that the two of you and our teachers involved, the team, have taken, that, okay, well, we need to do this. I think on a personal, I would have loved to see this happen sooner, but I also, again, there's, I realize there's limitations to how much we can ask our teachers to do and how fast. And what I don't want to see is that we jeopardize the quality of what we move forward, just in effort to move as fast as we can. But there is part of me that wishes that some of this was this year, so that I could walk into a classroom now and it wouldn't just be at random if I heard something and I didn't know that the first prosthetic was, you know, created in 300 B.C., so I just learned something. So I think that it's great, and I do want to commend our community partners who have not only waited here all night but who have been really active in making sure that this is, that the district is aware, that the district knows that there's resources, that there's support, as well as the board. I think that that's really important, and I know that Dr. Cash has assured me that independent of what happens moving forward, this is the right thing to do, and we will move forward doing this because it's the right thing that needs to happen in our curriculum. So again, thank you.
Tired of talking about it. We need to do it. This is an unending conversation for a longtime educator that needs to end. So, and I would just conclude by saying we have, this is, these are two great examples of our expert facilitators, our transition team leaders who are really pulling the heavy, heavy weight of our Common Core implementation. So kudos to these two who are doing it with social studies and so that you know we've got the same heavyweights in math, English, and science, and it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this actually brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we, no, we don't have any public comment? Okay. Board, any upcoming agenda items you'd like to see? All right, hearing none, I think we can adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
What do you mean?